Good evening. Welcome to the April 28th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge Legions.
The Pledge Legions, here's the flyer of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, in the universal world, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, move on to the roll call members. Madam Corcoran, roll please.
Sure. Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Robert Hawkins.
Here.
Thanks.
Okay, we don't have minutes for this meeting, so we'll have those at our next meeting. So we'll move on to old business. First item up here is ordinance 2025-10. This is concerning pedestrian alleyways in the downtown. This ordinance on second reading was tabled at our last meeting. So do I have a motion to take ordinance 2025-10 off the table? An emotion to take it off the table?
Take it off the table.
Yep, so we can talk about it?
I'll make a motion. We take it off the table.
We have motion to take it off the table in a second. All right, so now we can talk about it. All right, so this was obviously a lot of discussion around this ordinance. Certainly, a lot of the comments were directed specifically about the eastern alley. There was a lot of discussion about that. And so as part of that, when we talked about last time coming back with a proposed option for the council, essentially, the, again, because all the feedback was based off the eastern alley, the amendment proposed, it was kind of drafted, was essentially just remove the eastern alley from the ordinance. So if we want to have discussion about that, we can. Or if there's other amendments under that you guys have as well. So it's just kind of a process you guys, I mean initially, the thought would be to set the, go forward and set the path by talking about the amendment to remove the eastern alley. So any comments on that?
So the amendment will be amended, so it will be the south alley and the north alley that'll be in the ordinance.
Correct.
Not keeping certain things out of those particular alleys.
So the...
And then the east side just stays the way it is.
It would be status quo, yes. So the way it is currently, if the ordinance is amended, only the north and south alleys should be declared pedestrian alleys, and the eastern would be the same as it is just today. Yep.
And it won't get painted, or?
Those are HPC approvals, right? So those have been approved already. But there's, but the closure of it, you know, that it wouldn't be designated as pedestrian alley, right? So all the other things that come with it, with the trash, storage, things like that, would not apply because it's not going to be designated a pedestrian alley.
So everything just stays the same?
It'd be as it is today, yes.
It might get a mural or something, but it's up to building on it.
Well, and we have a mural in the alley by Merle Norman, their new location. So having murals is not prohibited in non pedestrian alleys, too.
Thanks. Just...
Alley is, for everybody's information, I don't know if you remember, but the Board of Works...
Dr. Mike.
I'm sorry. The Board of Works approved back in March for that alley to be closed from, I think it's March 25th up until August 1st for some repairs to the building and so forth. So that alley is going to be closed probably most of the summer, so. Anyway, it's not going to be much use there with that alley. So I know they'll have to, they'll have to provide access to the dance facility. I know they don't start till 5 o'clock, so I'm sure the contractor will be done before 5 o'clock, I'm sure, probably. They'll have to make room. And then if anyone else should need access to that alley, you know, they'll have to work with the contractor to try to get some access with that alley. You know, make arrangements with them to try to get some use out of that alley if they need it for loading or unloading or something. If they just absolutely have to have it, you know, that they can work with the contract and do that. But I honestly, I think our best bet is really to, easiest way to handle this ordinance until everything gets settled with that alley with building, because nothing changes in the alley. It'll still be an alley, be the same thing. There's still access for a person to go in there and load and unload whatever their equipment. We also know we have a 10-minute load and unload, and we know, you know, sometimes it takes longer than that. And I think we need to make sure that those that are going to be in alleys for a long time understand that if you're going to be there a long time, you need to come and talk to the city about some sort of a closure that you can get access to what you're going to do for a length of period of time, that you're going to be basically closing the alley, or any alley in a downtown area for longer than 10 minutes. So everybody knows that you're going to be using that alley, so. I would recommend, or I would make the motion that we amend the ordinance.
Let's see if we have any more discussion, then we can have a motion with that. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to amend this ordinance, but I wasn't sure, do you want, are we...
We're talking about the amendment currently to remove the eastern alley from the ordinance. So if you want to talk to that amendment...
So we can still go after that?
Yeah, we can, we can talk about it after, yeah. But, I mean, if there's any more comments on the removing the eastern alley from the ordinance? Okay, so Dick, was there, you going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We'll, let's remove paragraph C in the ordinance.
We have a motion to remove paragraph C. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so ordinance 2025-10 has been amended, removing the eastern alley. So this time now ordinance 2025-10 is on second reading, so as amended. So if there's any public comment concerning that ordinance, please come forward and keep your comments to the amended alley, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Sandra, yes.
Yes, I still wanted to amend now.
Okay, yes.
Okay, and I want to amend this ordinance by adding these words. And it's basically the compromise that was submitted last time. So, and the words are, "The alleyway located approximately halfway between Main Street and Washington Street, running east-west from Meridian Street in an easterly direction, 60 feet from east edge of Meridian Street sidewalk. Beyond 60 feet of the alley shall be a loading and unloading zone for businesses on the east side of the square only to the west side of the north-south alley running from Washington Street to Main Street. The loading and unloading zone shall not be used for public parking during the day or overnight." And that's what I want to make a motion to amend this ordinance by adding these words.
So you want to amend what we just removed, amend that?
That, I want to put this back in so that we don't have to worry about this issue later. It's covered. It's exactly what we talked about last time. It's the compromise, the first half up to 60 feet, and the last half for loading and unloading for all the businesses over there. So I think that we should proceed with that to make sure that everything is protected.
This is a recommendation of a new paragraph C.
A new, yes.
New paragraph C.
To amend the ordinance for that. Now, one of the discussions that, one of the discussions that the mayor and I've had this afternoon discussing a possible solution in this manner was to look at trying to make the alley as close to like the chop house alley, where there's a designation of about 85, 85 to 90 feet from the Meridian Street sidewalk back and leaving 40 feet to the back. There's 125 feet in that alley. And for what we know from the, the one business owner that needs enough space to put his trailer in to load and unload, okay, he needs probably about 30 feet, 35 feet from, from, once his gate is down to the neck of his trailer. And looking to try to keep that out of the north-south alley, okay, all he needs is about 40 feet, 40, 50 feet there. So the mayor and I were talking about a possibility of leaving 90 to 85 feet there from Meridian Street to there. That would leave the back half there for the opportunity for them to put in a trailer there when he needs to load and unload. And that does the same thing, only that that extends that 60 foot to 85 to 90 feet. Yes, it goes past the gas meters, okay, goes past that, and yet gives him more of public space there in between there and provides him his space, the space that they would need at the back end of the alley.
And that, I see what you're saying there.
Nothing changes but the length of the...
Right, but if we leave it at 60, then the utilities, the meters, the whole bit, they don't have any issues either, but because they're able to get all the way up to that. And if we make that pedestrian on beyond that, then there could be some issues down the road.
They will, utilities would still have access to the gas meter and so forth, because nothing would be, depending on what happens, whether there's a bollard put up there to stop people from going any further, or whether there's some sort of type of fencing, someone wants to put up a fence up like what's at the chop house, that people can walk in and around, and something so utilities could get to that area if they had to get there. It would still be available.
So the concern I had with 60 feet, so the entrance to the ballet studio is 50 feet back from the Meridian Street. So that leaves 10 feet out that door to where there then could be a moving car with people leaving the ballet studio.
It normally doesn't, the ballet school, only, most of the time, I've been told their hours are evening hours. And not in the daytime, when the other businesses that are daytime would be in there.
I mean, I don't know that, I mean, I know it's certainly nighttime, but...
Yeah, I still, I think we should leave it 60, 65 at the most, just to make sure that everything is covered.
Well, in your package I passed down, I presented essentially a picture of the difference between the 60, where that photo is taken from 60 feet outside of the alley of, from the, from the Meridian Street, and then also 90 feet. So it kind of gives you the visual difference of where, you know, as you talked about, the 90 feet would still, 90 feet back from the Meridian Street sidewalk would still allow essentially 30 to 35 feet for unloading. And then also, so essentially, it's giving a bigger buffer between the two.
We know for sure that that...
We're fine.
We're, we're fine. Ma'am, please, we're in the middle of the meeting.
We're fine, thank you.
I'm sorry, were you...
That, I was just saying that I didn't know, do you know for, you said you talked to him today? You talked to him today, to, at the 30 feet, he could use that, he can get his trailer in and everything?
No, I didn't talk to him today, no.
Last thing I want to do is hinder a business, any of them. You know, Mr. House said he uses that for his and his trailer, so I don't, you know, that's my main thing.
Right, so what, so right now, again, the ordinance hasn't been amended now, right? The eastern alley is no longer included, so it's, it's as is, as it was before this proposal, right? So now we're contemplating, do we want to add a loading zone area, right? And so the question is, how big is that loading zone?
That's correct.
Right, so, and again, the concern I have with if it's only 60 feet, right? Again, it's 10 feet outside of the door of the ballet studio. And so the question is, what's the proper distance, right? And again, based on what they said at the last meeting, you know, the current trailer is 26 feet. So we thought having, essentially, and also there's a overlay too that compares it to the chop house. We kind of set a precedent where kind of 90 feet back is kind of a good breakpoint, so to speak, from a, you know, activated space versus a, you know, unused or, or, you know, transition space. And so that's kind of what the precedent we have downtown. But again, it's, it's not my decision, it's your guys' decision. And so I just wanted to give you the information and give you the perspective that, you know, there are people coming in and out of that door at 50 feet down the alley.
How long is his trailer? Do we know that?
At the last meeting, it was 26-foot trailers, what they said.
Okay, what'd he say?
He said that he didn't, that he told you...
No, don't tell me that. All I want to know is what the length of his trailer is. The nose of his trailer to the back with the door open, that's all I want to know.
Dick, does he have to pull it in with the vehicle, or does he...
All I want to know is the length of the trailer.
He could pull in the vehicle, and they could unhitch the truck, and then the trailer could be there while it's being loaded. But again, this, this ordinance also doesn't address our current ordinance. It says it's a 10-minute loading/unloading, right? So that's a whole nother topic of whether we're okay setting that precedent. Whereas, again, currently as it's amended, it's removed it from, it'll be as it is today.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about the loading and unloading, that's a whole different issue. But I, I'm inclined to stay with the 60 feet just to make sure that everybody that uses that, you know, one of the other businesses, rather than blocking the alley, backed out into it because of the vehicles. And if there is a, one of those posts put in the middle there, which I would recommend, I did last time, you know, at the end of wherever we decide, then that way no vehicle can get up farther, but it might make them go out into the alleyway, blocking everything, if we don't leave it at the 60 feet to give somebody...
The ordinance has been amended as it is right now. And the alley is going to stay the same as it is today. And I believe that if you want to make future changes, then that's another project that has to be looked at. Not, it's not discussion here to go through measurements and all these types of things.
I think Sandra is trying to, trying to get it figured out now because when the construction's done in three months, it's probably going to be back on the table here. And so we might as well figure it out now while we have all fresh in our minds and we're all talking about it. So, I mean, this is a special we've been having for, since the last...
Yeah, but when you start talking about measurements, you need to get engineering involved, and they need to, you know...
We, we measured all today, right? So that the overview, the white page there, that, that kind of lays it all out and shows you all the distances and the measurements with everything.
Well, I'm, I'm still inclined to leave this at 60. That's what I would like to have on this ordinance.
Prefer the discussion on that? Yeah.
I know public hearing's not open, but did Casey respond with the length of his trailer?
All the more reason to leave it at the 60 so that he could do that, then.
You know, but I think the real discussion here is we need to amend this ordinance on this 10-minute loading and unloading, because we heard discussions from not only Samson's, but other businesses that have trucks that come in and they're there for an hour. And, and I talked with Casey last week, and he's told me, he goes, "In an hour, I can load everything that I need and be out of there." So if we can change the ordinance to increase the loading and unloading time, and then give him a fair portion of that alleyway, I don't think he's disputing any of that. Obviously, the question is, what is a fair portion?
And the other challenge is, this ordinance isn't addressing where it sets the loading time for the, so it's kind of two separate issues that are certainly related, right? But they're two separate issues. And so...
So what if...
And so if, again, as amended today, right, we keep it status quo as it is. And if we want to figure out what is the right, and we can have an ordinance drafted to say, if we do want to allow a loading for more than 10 minutes, we can draft that ordinance and have that implemented.
So we'll keep this, this ordinance that I'm wanting to amend, this motion, at 60 feet, and then we're going to amend it later if we need to? I want to make a motion to amend this and add this in. I don't want to have to deal with this, and I'm sure the businesses don't either.
So we have a motion to amend it to include a loading zone of 60 feet? Is there a second to that motion? Eric, can you speak to the microphone? They can hear you.
Definitely for a loading zone, because I think this is going to come back up in front of the council here in a couple of months. Because I feel like we've been trying to revitalize our downtown and trying to make it better, but we also want to make sure that our businesses have the support they need. And I'm just afraid that if we don't set some boundaries, it's just going to come before us and things, you know, things happen. Well, I am going to piggyback off what Sandra was talking about, too. I want to amend part of the ordinance as well to change, like in section two, and I want to add, "Any improvement, closure, or modification of an alleyway will require approval from the common council." And then if you scroll down, add a section seven for it to say, "The common council shall maintain the power to enforce the provisions of this ordinance. The board of works and public safety and/or city division may make suggestions to the common council, but no action should be taken without ultimate council approval." I know the board of works, they do make those decisions, but I think that this is something that is a very hot topic, and I think that the elected officials really should be taking input from people and knowing what's going on with everything in the downtown area, especially the alleyways. So I am proposing for those amendments to be made as well.
So we do have a pending motion to make an amendment?
Oh, sorry, okay.
So, so is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second from Sierra. Okay, those in favor of adding a 60-foot loading zone, vote aye. Did you do a roll call vote as well, Tanya? That's okay? From the, from the, the way you called the roll, yeah.
Mike Kincaid.
Yes.
Keith Campbell. Sandra, Sandra, you made the motion, I presume you're a yes. Dick Robertson.
I know, because I think it should be longer.
John Copeland.
Yes.
Sierra.
Yes.
Yes, and Robert Hawkins.
Yes.
Okay, so the ordinance has been, motion has been amended then to include the 60-foot loading zone. And so Sierra, you had a, we're fine. So Sierra, you had a motion to amend?
Yeah, I, well, there's quite a few little tweaks throughout it. I sent the revision to you guys because it references the board of works quite a few times throughout this ordinance, and I swapped out for the common council. But I read what my suggestions were, again, under section two, pedestrian alleyways, adding at the bottom of that paragraph, "Any improvement, closure, or modification of the alleyway will require approval from the common council." And then you scroll down, adding section seven, "Council oversight and implementation authority." Sorry, where's the law here? Okay, and then that's at the bottom, section seven, "The common council shall maintain the power to enforce the provisions of this ordinance. The board of works and public safety or any other city division may make suggestions to the common council, but no action shall be taken without ultimate council approval." So that's a lot, I know, in trying to change. I'm proposing those amendments as well as, do I have to say each individual swap for council to...
You sent in writing, we know what the amendment reads.
What I'm intending.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm making a motion that we amend the ordinance to that.
A second.
So there was, so there was some, so when we got your amendment, we looked at, looked at it, and Rob, I know we had a cursory glance. If you wanted to touch on from a legal standpoint?
Question you might be getting ready to ask. These, these other changes are already in code? And don't we have to go to those codes to change each one of those?
Yes, one of, I know it came in late, and one of the things we were discussing, I mean, these are statutory provisions that now we're seeking to amend by this ordinance that is both set out for the board of works as well as the executive of the city. So my brief discussion with the mayor before this is, you know, I would recommend at least we look at this more closely, at least to make sure that what we're doing is going to be consistent with the statutory authority. That being said, obviously, we got a motion and a second on here. You know, I know a lot of the stuff came in late, you know, right before the meeting.
So essentially, the state code sets, I guess, responsibilities, right? And one of the responsibilities of, you know, the board of works is giving is oversight of city property. And so the question is, I guess I'm trying to understand the, the goal of, I mean, of, because, I mean, we, Dick's on the board of works, right? We have alley closure requests a lot, it comes frequently, right? So this would, essentially what you're wanting to do is where only the pedestrian alleys would fall under that purview?
I just think that for this specific topic, it should be falling under the elected officials to make decisions on, on what's going on in downtown. And these alleyways are in downtown. And so I did not realize it could, the statutes could be incorrect, and I don't want to do anything that could be unlawful. But I just think that the elected officials should be making these type of decisions.
But if it is, and if it is for the pedestrian alleys only, then that what you said is correct. That you're, you're wanting to change just for those... correct, that you're wanting to change just for those pedestrian alleys, not everywhere for the Board of Works.
Yes, correct.
So it wouldn't affect code, other than the pedestrian alleys.
So...
I'm going to defer to you because I legally, I don't know.
That's what you're trying to, that's what you're trying to...
Is it still, is it still an issue if there's a designated loading zone, in your mind?
I still think that the, that the council should have ultimate say on the things that go in the alleyways and stuff in downtown. But that's just my opinion. Like I said, legally, I don't want to step on any toes. I don't know the code. So I didn't realize that was infringing there. So I don't want to be doing that, but...
Well, the Board of Works takes care of a lot of the requests, like the mayor said.
Yeah.
And...
So, so when I, another thing...
I think Rob needs to be able to take a look at this.
Yeah, so maybe we...
Bring it back later.
Yeah, table the amendment. The reason, one of the reasons why this was so important to me to try to get this changed was because when I was talking with Casey, he was saying sometimes that they have people that come in and rent their craft room, and if there's a closure that they're not aware of, sometimes they've had to cancel their, their events that they have scheduled and refund people's money and redo invitations and stuff because people aren't able to access or parking and all that stuff because they have stuff going on right outside their shop. So the communication has not been that great between the city, it seems like, and all the downtown business owners when it comes to, like, closures and stuff. I know it comes, I know it gets uploaded online, but I, sometimes it's hard for everybody to check every meeting. I just feel like a better conversation could be had, and I just want to make sure that I'm a part of that, to make sure that everybody's on the same page about things. Going off on a little bit different of a tangent, I want to see that the city does a better job of notifying everybody. Like, I personally, I know we followed code for not having to notify all the businesses affected by the alleyway closure. But I feel like as good stewards, we should have notified everybody around that could have been affected by the alleyway. I mean, I'm part of the city, and when I found out that the businesses were not, they weren't told, send, not even a certified letter, doesn't have to be anything crazy, but just good communication between our neighbors. I feel like they should have known more than what's posted online. I don't know. I just feel like we're all, Lublin is kind of still a small town, and we can call up the phone or, you know, send a text or an email, something that, hey, this is on the docket. So I would like to see us as a collective do a better job of that communication, even if, I know we follow code, so I know, like, that's okay. But I just want to, moving forward, do a little bit better job of communication throughout everything, if that makes sense. I know that does another tangent, but that's why this was so important to me, to try to get this switched over to the council, because I want to make sure that that communication is, is worked out well. That's all. And I know that was a lot. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to take up too much of the time.
No, that's a fair point.
But that's where my concerns were, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I guess my biggest concern is I just think it, when state code outlines authorities, right, we obviously, councils, legislative, fiscal, right, mayor and Board of Works are the executive branch, and so there's issues sometimes there. But so, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to have a vote on that, or do you want to withdraw that motion to what we?
Let's withdraw the motion until we can talk with Rob to make sure that we are following the codes appropriately, and if we need to change something, or if we're not allowed to change something, that we're doing everything lawfully and correctly. But I do want this to be brought back up. So even if the rest of the council doesn't feel the same ways as me, that's fine. I have no idea how they feel. But I do want this to be brought back up. So at least we're in the correct, we have a correct ordinance lawfully, and it can be voted on again.
So the motion has been withdrawn. So we have an amended ordinance 2025-10. Dick, you were commenting that you wanted to, I mean, obviously, the current amended ordinance has 60 feet in it. I mean, again, I've showed you guys the pictures. Again, the concern I have is the exit of the Valley Studios is, or the door is 50 feet into the alley. So it leaves a 10-foot buffer. That is a concern of mine. So I guess, is there any discussion of whether 60 feet is the right number, or if we want to?
We already amend, we already...
Your loading zone at 60 feet is amended in the ordinance now, right? And so we can amend that again. We can amend that 60 to 90, or 60 to 75, or something like that to give it, if we wanted to. Or we can move forward with as it is. So I just wanted to make sure that we get it to a place where we're all happy with it, was, because I, again, I think 60 feet is too close. But I also understand that we were, that's the will of the council to have a designated loading area.
Correct.
Right? So is it 60 feet? Is it 30 feet? Like, again, that's, that's the discussion to have, if we want to amend it, amend the amendment, essentially.
I'm okay with 60 feet.
Thank you. I am, too.
Discussion?
Have we talked to any representatives of the dance studio on their opinion or what they might like?
Ask a question, just, in terms of execution, is 60 feet from the right-of-way of Meridian Street, is that what you're proposing?
Sidewalk or meridian street.
And then I think what you're saying, is the loading zone everything that's left, or is the loading zone something different?
Everything left.
60 feet goes to the beginning of the meters from Meridian. It goes to the beginning of the meters.
Correct.
Okay. That's what, what I was proposing, or what I did propose.
You're saying the loading zone would match that? Because I guess what I'm hearing is that you're saying, is the loading zone all the way to that, or is there some sort of a transitional space?
The loading zone would be all the way up to that 60 feet, and then you've got 60 feet from there to the sidewalk.
Just want to make sure I'm on the same page if that's...
If you wanted to put a post in the middle there, whatever, to keep traffic, that's fine, you know?
Well, I don't know where it would go, but I have...
Well, I mean, if the council's comfortable with 60, that's your, that's the decision, right? So if that's...
I had a question. If anyone notified the dance studio, did any of their representatives speak out and let us know? We were looking at 60 or 90 feet and what their opinion was.
I mean, it was proposed tonight, so I don't know.
During the last meeting, they weren't aware that this was even going on at the last meeting. So I don't know.
I will say, we have had complaints from the dance studio parents that are concerned with where that is, right? And certainly, if it's, again, the 10 feet, that's part of why I've shared my concern with it, because, again, I think, now why I shared the pictures of actually show you what it looks like from that point in the alley, 60 versus 90.
But there would be a baller there, so cars, so cars could not drive past there, correct? I mean, or some, some sort of barrier not allowing cars to get any closer to the door?
Correct. Yeah.
Closer to the...
But obviously, a baller does not, like, I mean, yeah.
My daughter goes to ballet there, so I understand. I mean...
We're still, we're still discussing, sir. Go to Sierra.
I was just saying, so, I mean, I understand that that alleyway, it's, it's kind of dark. They did put some lights in there. I noticed these pictures. My husband actually sent me a picture of the light today because my daughter went to ballet there today. But, I mean, I don't think that they, we've had any issues with cars. I've not known of any issues with cars coming down, getting close to the door, since my daughter's been there for ballet the last couple of months. But I'm not there all the time and every day of the week, so.
Sorry, can I, can I get one more clarification? I want to thank Mr. Haas. He had a copy of the plat with us here, if I can show this on the screen. So the, is it not on? So the alley is platted at a dimension of 123 feet. That's right here. So that's, that's from basically the corner of... I'm sorry. Yes, measures 123 feet. It's platted 120. So the, the motion I heard made was to make a 60-foot loading zone. So is the loading zone measured from the back?
No.
Or is the loading zone measured from the front?
60 feet back from the Meridian Street sidewalk.
60 feet from Meridian Street, and from there to the back alley is loading.
Okay, so it's not a 60-foot loading zone. It's a 60, we're amending the ordinance so that the pedestrian alleyway is 60 feet from Meridian Street.
Yes.
I just want to, I'm sure Rob would agree. Words matter. We said 60-foot loading zone. I want to, and, and that's a little bit, there's a discrepancy there because it's not 120 feet, it's 123 feet.
It says running in an east...
How far back is that door?
50.
Doors, 50 feet to roughly the center of the door.
So it's, so let me read the amendment here for everybody.
Okay.
Okay. It says 60 feet from the east edge of the Meridian Street sidewalk.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Essentially, 60 feet back is where it would, so then past that would be, because it creates the pedestrian alleyway for 60 feet back from the Meridian Street sidewalk, and then the remaining of it is the loading zone.
Okay. And you can see on this exhibit, that is the gas meter location. The gas meter location would not be protected by any baller that we would, we would have. It would be beyond the alley, the pedestrian alleyway.
Correct.
And to clarify, nothing we do tonight changes any written or unwritten utility easements and util, rights of utility access to, to that property. Thank you.
Further discussion on that?
Okay, so you give them 60 feet for the pedestrian right-of-way. You're giving Casey the ability to have 63 feet to load and unload.
Essentially, yes.
That's bringing a vehicle in if he has to, the trailer, get in, get out, and the other businesses.
Now, my other, my other question, and I wish someone was here from there, them also, when is most of this loading and unloading taking place? Is it in the mornings? Is it in the evenings? Because I, and I don't have small kids anymore, I don't know. But I will assume, probably shouldn't do that, but most of the kids are coming in there in the evenings.
That's what I was...
So if, if their loading and unloading is in there and done and over with, it's a mute issue. We don't have to worry about them having a vehicle there. That's why I propose that we change that to say, he gets an hour, and, and everyone else gets an hour because we heard a bunch of testimony that many businesses take an hour to load or unload. And then, yes, sir, great.
My understanding, they also have daytime classes primarily for homeschool children.
Okay. And that's why I asked that, because I want to make sure, obviously, safety of the children is number one.
I think the majority of the traffic is evening, but they do have classes throughout the day.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is that, is that okay, sir? If we get a clarification on that?
It's fine. Yeah.
Go on, go up here.
I can just answer your question. You wanted clarification on when they load and unload. It's during the workday.
Can you state your name?
I'm sorry?
Can you state your name?
Amy Sanye. I was just answering your question.
Thank you. Yep. Appreciate it.
All right.
And I'm sorry, I didn't, he's loading when?
During the workday.
During the workday.
During working hours, a normal workday, office hours.
So it could take anywhere from 8:00 to 5:00, depending on when they get the truck in there to...
Yes.
Okay.
And the dance studio starts at 5:00 first class, I heard. So...
I don't know about the hours of the dance studio.
That's what I heard today, you know? So I'm assuming that, I'm assuming, or I'll put it this way, we didn't put it in the ordinance, but I hope it's this way, that you are in, out, and done before 5:00. That alley is open to kids that can walk either direction to the dance studio.
And that's the thing. Would he be, would he agree with that so that he, it kind of helps him with his loading and unloading, do it up till 4:00 p.m.? And then that way, we don't have to worry about any of the kids. But now we have the problem of, they have these daytime classes, and I obviously, the safety of the kids is my number one priority.
Absolutely. I think they would agree with that.
I understand he has a business to run, and I want to help him, too. So, and I think, in my discussions with Casey, is he's more than willing to work around timeframes if we have to.
He's, he's very willing to work with the ballet studio. And I don't think that Mary Lou has any issues with them, with them using the alley for loading and unloading. She never has. And I believe that was part of her letter that she sent with Abby last time. And this whole, you know, yes, it does give you 10 feet beyond this door. Are we going to close down the road in front of the ballet studio? Every time I have class, there's kids that are going to be out on the sidewalk closer to traffic on that road than they are to this loading and unloading zone.
Well, I think that, and correct me if I'm wrong, sir, they are changing that design so all of their kids come in and out of that alley now.
Correct. But they, but they walk back to the front of the building, right? See what I'm saying? Like, we can't close vehicular traffic down everywhere. At some point, it's kind of common sense, right?
Right. I agree with you on that. Yes.
Yeah.
It's a little unique when we've, I mean, the downtown was designed to protect and be safe for pedestrians, and there's barriers, and there's cars in the way that are parked. There are curves. There are things like that that are impediments to that. Whereas backing a trailer down an alley, very narrow alley as well, it's a little bit of a different blind situation, right? Especially if there's, again, 10 feet, right? So that's, you know, I have young kids, and I know you're trying to grab them, and 10 feet can sometimes be a challenge. But, you know, it, again, it's, it's not my decision. This is council's decision. And so we're trying to find a balance between...
I think there was a vote, right? Already? There was a vote on the 60 feet, correct? Then you're trying to push for another vote to have them change their minds, is how it feels.
I'm trying to have a discussion of what the right amount is, yes, because I...
You did that before the vote, and the council voted for the 60 feet. Did they not?
I think we need to move on from this subject right here. We've already voted on it. It's already been...
Well, Sierra withdrew her motion, right? So, so we have it as amended as Sandra proposed her amendment in there, right? That's currently in the ordinance, right? So again, I wanted to have it in a final form before we'd public comment on, on the ordinance. It's kind of, so I wanted to make sure there was no further amendments on the distance on any of that. That's what I was trying to do before we opened the floor.
I think a lot of us are confused out here because that's not what it sounded like. It sounded like you were trying to get them to change the amendment and change their minds. Is that not what you were doing, Mr. Mayor?
I can't make them change their mind in the amendment. The amendment was adopted, approved. I'm making sure there's no more amendments to being proposed concerning, because we have it in there as a 60-foot loading area now.
Right.
And so the, I want to make sure there are no more amendments before I open up for public testimony. That's what I was trying to do.
So I guess my only question is, can we change that ordinance to help all of our businesses to increase that loading and loading time?
Not in this ordinance. That's, that's a separate section. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Bring that up when we bring up hers.
Sure.
Well, and I think so, I think, I mean, there's nothing to say that we can, if the council's will is to trial this and see, and if anybody starts to feel unsafe, we can revisit and have a rediscussion, and we can always amend the amendment and make it longer if we feel like it's causing an issue. That's definitely something that we can do if we feel like it's causing issues, you know? Like if cars are getting too close or something in the alleyway. I'm not in the alleyway very often, only once a week for my daughter to go to ballet, and I don't see cars parked in there very often. So I've not seen it be an issue, but I'm also only there one day a week for like an hour. So I don't have the same scope somebody else might.
And if it was brought up to the council that there was an issue, then we'd, of course, address it. But right now, there's no issues that we know of. But if it is brought up, we can definitely address it.
I think, too, we can still beautify the alley. I mean, just because somebody came back in and out doesn't mean a mural can't go all the way down, doesn't mean people can't still use that as part of a walkway, too. I mean...
That's pretty much what they're going to do, the whole front part anyway. So it will be nice.
Yeah.
Any further discussion or motions? Okay. Rob, can you read the ordinance on the second reading, please? Okay, Rob, can you read the ordinance on the second reading, please? Essentially, it's that, yeah. Yeah, essentially.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council Ordinance 2025-10 is an ordinance of the city designating pedestrian walkways in the city of Lebanon. This council previously adopted ordinance 72.05, which outlined parking in alleyways, and authorized the usage of alleys in the city. This council also adopted ordinance 101.001, which outlined unlawful deposits in alleys and allowable garbage and natural debris storage pickup and disposable practices in alleys in the city. This council recognizes the importance of promoting pedestrian-friendly spaces within the community and improving access for all residents. And this council has identified certain alleyways within the downtown areas suitable for conversion into pedestrian walkways, which will enhance the local pedestrian experience and support economic vitality of the area. Therefore, this council finds as follows, the recitals are incorporated here and by reference, as of the effective date of this ordinance, Chapter 78, Pedestrian Alleyways of the City Code of Ordinances shall be added in accordance with Exhibit A attached here too. The remaining portions of the city code are not affected by this ordinances, all prior ordinances inconsistent within here rescinded to the extent that there are any inconsistencies in this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage. Just as a recount, Exhibit A has Section 78.01, as the following alleyways within the city of Lebanon are hereby officially designated as pedestrian walkways. The alleyway located approximately halfway between State Road 39 and Meridian Street, running north-south from Main Street in the southerly direction, from the south edge of the right of way of Main Street to the north edge of the right of way of the first east-west vehicular alley, south of and generally parallel with Main Street, that remains the same as the last meeting. B is the same as well, the alleyway located approximately halfway between State Road 39 and Meridian Street, running north-south from Washington Street in the northern, northerly direction, from the north edge of the right of way of Washington Street to the south edge of the right of way of the first east-west vehicular alley, north of and generally parallel with Washington Street. C was amended earlier, the alleyway, alleyway located approximately halfway between Main Street and Washington Street, running east-west from Meridian Street in an easterly direction, 60 feet from the east edge of Meridian Street sidewalk. Beyond 60 feet, the alley shall be a loading and unloading zone for businesses on the east side of the square, only to the west side of the north-south alley, running from Washington Street to Main Street. The loading and unloading zone shall not be used for public parking during the day or night. And then 78.02 talks about prohibited motorized vehicle use, 78.03 talks about prohibited storage use, 78.04 discusses prohibited logistical pickup and delivery use, 78.05 addresses authorization for signage and markings, 78.06 talks about development of pedestrian walkways, all of that remains unchanged from the first reading.
Thank you, Rob, we're spinning around the second reading, if there's any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-10, please come forward.
Evening, I'm gonna read a statement that was provided from Casey and Abby, so, council members, thank you for your time, consideration, and the thoughtful discussions you've had surrounding this issue. Although we are unable to attend in person tonight, please note that this decision in this community remain incredibly important to us. As we are currently representing Lebanon in our business at George Washington's Mount Vernon, one of several national events we've been invited to this year in celebration of the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. It's an honor to participate in this historic moment, one that reinforces just how deeply our work is tied to the founding values of this country, values like open discourse, shared responsibility, and the pursuit of common ground. While we are away, we have remained in close contact with many of our neighbors and community members, we have also had the opportunity to speak with several council members in recent days, and we are grateful for the time and openness you've extended to us. This evening, we respectfully urge you to support the compromise we proposed, closing the alley at the Western Ballard near the gas meter. This solution balances the needs of multiple stakeholders and grounded in both history and practicality. It allows the front portion of the alley, adjacent to the ballet school's new entrance, to function as a pedestrian walkway, promoting safety for children and families. At the same time, it maintains critical access to the rear portion of the alley for businesses that rely on it, excuse me, for deliveries, operations, and infrastructure, ours included. This isn't just about us, we have had the full support of our neighboring businesses who would be impacted by full closure. They recognize, as we do, that the downtown works best when access, commerce, and safety are thoughtfully aligned. The proposal we've offered reflects months of dialogue and a sincere commitment to shared success. Our business has invested over a decade into Lebanon's downtown, restoring two historic properties, growing our team to 14 full-time members, and drawing thousands of visitors each year. We have proudly called this community home, and we have done our part to help it thrive. The support we received over the last few weeks through phone calls, storefront visits, and public messages has been overwhelming and deeply appreciated. It speaks volumes about the connection we share with this community. We do not ask for special treatment, we ask only for fair consideration, just as the Chop House, Callan's Drugstore, and Clues Brew's has been afforded accommodations that enable their business to flourish. Our proposal offers the same opportunity, a balanced thoughtful solution that preserves downtown accessibility, prioritizes safety, and allows our business and others to continue operating as we have for many years. Government at every level should aim to facilitate solutions, not create unnecessary hardship, and in the spirit of the very founding principles we are celebrating this week, we believe that compromise is not weakness, it is wisdom. Please vote in favor of closing the alley at the Western Ballard, let us continue serving this community without disruption, disruption, excuse me, just as we have done for more than a decade. And then I'm reading a statement on behalf of Casey and Abby, who are currently representing their business at a national event at George Washington's Mount Vernon, and I'm not in a position to answer direct questions, but if you needed clarification on anything, I can try and contact them.
Thank you for comments. Further public comment?
Hi, council members, Missy Krulik with the Heart of Lebanon, I wanted to thank you, first of all, for protecting Alleyoop, an alleyway that we sought to activate this past year, and so, one of the reasons why this ordinance came about. So activated alleyways bring so much character and energy to your downtown. When they're well-designed and maintained, they become places where everyone feels welcomed, comfortable, and safe. They are all, they also serve a role in helping our small businesses by driving more foot traffic and make, making downtown even more inviting to linger longer. The Downtown Action Plan, which I have right here, I keep on my desk, so that I know what the community members that came together, the stakeholders that came together to create this plan, what they envisioned for our downtown. So, and, and it's a plan that the city council put into the city's comprehensive plan, that highlights pedestrian alleyways as a priority. Based on feedback gathered from the public, including downtown building owners and business owners, this is the plan that was enacted. As a Main Street organization, it's our job to help bring this community vision to life. One of the first projects we took on was Alleyoop, we designed it, we had it approved by the Historic Preservation Commission and the Board of Works. We raised the funds $108,000, and we made it happen. Recently, while looking into things, we found out that the pedestrian alleys denoted in this Downtown Action Plan weren't officially protected by an ordinance. So now, we are asking, we were asking the city to protect these public spaces, a space improved through public and private dollars, so that it stays a clean, vibrant part of downtown for years to come. Again, I reiterate, this was an ordinance that was initiated by the Heart of Lebanon as a way to protect these public spaces, to ensure that they remain welcoming, comfortable, and safe places for the community and the visitors in our downtown, accordance to our Downtown Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Missy, for the public comment. Questions?
John Lastley, I just had a quick question. This door that everybody is having issues with, this was actually okayed by who to be installed? Was it not the city council, or?
Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, so why didn't they think about that before? I mean, if you're worried about it being larger, why wasn't the door moved back farther? Just a thought.
Further comment?
Denise Niblick, I just wanted to, I'm excited to find a compromise. I really, really love our small businesses, every single one of them, I love them a lot. I, however, like, I really appreciated what you had to say about, like, maybe it's revisited at some point if we feel like people aren't safe. But the number one thing I care about, besides murals, besides, you know, activating alleys, all of the fun things that, yes, maybe could or maybe not happen, who knows, the number one thing I care about is safety. There's Princess Camp, it's during the day, it's not only evening things, but, and that's not forever, that's, you know, a certain amount of time in the summer, but there are things during the day. It's hard for me to wrap my head around a little bit about being that close to the door, if you've already talked about a little, like, the length of the trailer, how much you would actually need, and when you talk apples to apples, which, believe me, I've read a lot of comments and a lot of social media things to try to get a grasp on how people feel about this, because it is important people feel heard. And I think the Chop House was, alley was used a lot for that, so I'm, I am really nervous, I love that you would be willing to revisit this if people feel unsafe, but in some ways it feels like, wouldn't it be best to be cautious first and expand later if we see that there are not issues? I, I'm just a little, I think, I don't know, in a better word than to say, a little disappointed to see something so close to that when you have an option here that would allow a great amount of unloading, and, and there might be employees here that actually work and do this, and, and know if they typically unhitch, or if they don't, and all of those things, and working through the time, but I just think it would be always best to be cautious when it comes to a situation like this, so I guess that's all I want to say, but thank you for your time.
Further comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Eric Comkess, been a resident of the Lebanon area for 16 years. My daughters have done ballet at the Lebanon Ballet School for 10 years, including Princess Ballet Camp. I've been outside that, those buildings for a very large number of evenings, I've never seen a vehicle in that alley while the ballet school was doing anything. And, yes, I'm also a supporter and client of Sampson Historical, I've been, that is where I regularly go to get my last-minute Christmas and birthday presents. I do think that the 60-foot rule will be best for everybody involved, it will provide plenty of safety and opportunity for when things are done downtown. Most of the time, what I see that alley is used for is a place to hide porta-pots. Thank you again for the 60-foot rule, thank you for your time.
Further comments?
Hi guys, Corey Koots, first statement I need to make is, I'm representing myself personally, I do not represent any organizations this evening. My request is that this entire ordinance be tabled for further discussion for multiple reasons. As read, the ordinance said that no businesses located outside of the east side of the square are allowed to use this loading zone, correct? That's how it was read by Rob. It was read by Rob that the loading zone can only be used by businesses of the east side of the square.
That is how it is worded, yes, yep.
So-
It doesn't say only, it says for businesses on the east side of the square.
So it is not restrictive to only?
Yeah, for, for, for businesses, but on the east side.
On the east side of the square only, is what the amendment was.
Right, so I think there needs to be a lot of cleanup on the language, because as we heard before, words are very important, so even as written, the reporter couldn't use it for any loading, the church right behind it couldn't be used for any loading, so I, I hear you, but there's not clear verbiage in here, and I think that's going to be an issue. Secondly, I'll, I'll respond in a moment, secondly, I personally take a ton of offense to the lack of communication piece, because you have all been contacted multiple times, not only on this issue, but on other issues, and you failed to respond. So, not less than three to five times, you've been contacted and chose not to respond. What's that?
Nothing to do with the council members right now, we're talking about this ordinance.
Yeah, in the ordinance, you talked about lack of communication, so I'm addressing that piece.
For individuals that have businesses on the square and that the city does business with, I'm talking about the city of Lebanon as a whole being better communicators with the residents of the town and businesses-
And are you a representative of the city?
Sir, please, please.
Yep, so, that's just a point, I've, we've asked for communication, myself personally, as well as other organizations, we have not received reciprocation. So that's one major, major contention with this, but ultimately, it comes down to, the verbiage has to be cleaned up on this, again, it is the will of the council, but I don't think this is a clean cut. Thank you.
Further comment?
Good evening, Paul Van Clay, just a few random things, I did a quick search, City of Lawrence has a two-hour loading and unloading zone, so I think there is some room to expand loading and unloading zones and designate where they're at. Also about putting a gate or a fence up, there are national fire protection rules saying that the gas meter, electric meters, electric service panels need 30 inches, so I don't know where that lies in regards to possibly putting up a fence. So when you say, we're going to put up a fence at X number of feet, you also need to look at the, the environment, not just enact a arbitrary number. With the danger of kids exiting in the alley, I think that's pretty minimal, comparing when they have to cross the street, Meridian Street, to get to a car, and then comparing it to the restaurant that's on the corner of North Street and 39, there's actually seating on the sidewalk, and so pedestrians going down that sidewalk on 39 across the Barneys are walking pretty close to the highway at much higher speeds. And the only last thing I have to say is, the, the central business district should be for businesses like Sampson, the ballet studio, and others that are there.
Further comments?
I just wanted to respond to Mr. Koots, is it Koots? Because his last name, to his request to table it, I think during the last meeting he had no interest in tabling it, he wanted you to vote and vote his way, it didn't go his way tonight, I think that's why he's asking you to table it, but also, if I could show a picture really quick, this was, and I don't know how to work this thing.
It should, there you go.
I know it's kind of hard to see, but if you remember from the last meeting, this was the photograph- I know it's kind of hard to see, but if you remember from the last meeting, this was the photograph that Mr. Coots had showed and talked about how ugly the dumpsters were. I was able to find a picture on the internet showing a different point of view. You can see the dumpsters in the back by the yellow wall, people seem to be enjoying themselves with the dumpsters back there at the end. So sometimes perspective changes things.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's a drivable alley.
A drivable alley, yes.
It's not a pedestrian alley.
It's not a pedestrian alley. And there are many pictures of this alley. People don't seem to mind that there's dumpsters at the end of that alley.
For the comments?
Jonathan Haas, 105 North Meridian Street. I was here last week to present some facts about the alley with the survey width and everything else. I'm here tonight just for the clicks on YouTube, because apparently last night's, or last week's video was just like the most clicks we ever had. So I did want to say, as a member, as a citizen of Lebanon, I was kind of disappointed in the way the citizens reacted online. I mean, we're all neighbors. If we don't like our council member, we shouldn't go online and blast them. The same with the mayor, same with Missy, Kevin, the city employees. They're just trying to do their job, we're all part of this community. I applaud Missy, she's doing a great job trying to get community downtown. I mean, more to just businesses downtown, we need to have people down there. Face-to-face communication doesn't happen anymore, everybody's on their little phone, everybody's behind their keyboard. It's sad. I wanted to thank the mayor last week when I was up here, on behalf of the scouts, and I'm sure Mr. Hawkins would like to as well. He pitched a dinner, or a luncheon for the scouts, raised a bunch of money for scouts in central Indiana. We really appreciate that. Last weekend, my youngest and Denise's oldest and a bunch of their friends spent the whole weekend having the time of their life running around the forest up at Camp Colum in Frankfurt on a Cub Scout adventure that was partially paid for by the money the mayor raised. Part of being a community is not just streets and alleys, but it's coming together, doing things together, having conversations together, and being humane and being civil. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your comments. For the public comment? Okay, singing. Will the council further discussion?
No, sir. I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-10.
We have a motion to approve as amended. We have a motion to approve as amended, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Sandra, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, that ordinance is adopted. All right, next item will be ordinance 2025-11. This is authorizing taxable refunding City of Lebanon, Indiana Sewer Works Revenue Bonds of 2018, and then authorizing the issuance of City of Lebanon Sewer Works Bonds Refunding Issue Works Refunding Revenue Bonds Series 2025 and other related matters. This is on second reading. Rob, can you give the intro and then go further?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, again, we went through ordinances 2025-11 and 12 at the last meeting. Scott Miller, I see he's back there from Baker Tilly, Catherine Fanellos here from Dinsmore. And I thought it would be good, we did have some changes to each of those ordinances. We had comments from IFA. I'm happy to go through them, but I thought it may be good for Catherine to give an overview of it, and Scott as well, if you have any questions.
Good evening, Catherine Fanello with Dinsmore Show. As Rob stated, you have two ordinances that were introduced last council meeting. The taxable refunding of the 2018 bonds. And the reason that we are doing that is to basically modify some restrictive covenants with respect to additional bonds, and also to make sure that we're segregating civil city revenues, sewage works revenues versus the LEAP wastewater district revenues. So that is why it is a, we call it a taxable refunding, because it's not technically able to be optionally redeemed at this time, and so it will be a taxable refunding to bondholders. However, IFA is purchasing this bond. And so, again, just to get rid of some covenants, restrictive covenants. And then for, do you want me to do them one at a time, or do you want me to talk about both?
You can talk about them both, because they're kind of related, so.
So then ordinance number 2512 is the ordinance to issue the revenue bonds for the wastewater or the LEAP wastewater district. So the changes in both of these are from IFA, just specific language that they want. There wasn't really anything material, just their preferences on how certain things are described in certain terms. That's kind of a high-level overview, but happy to answer any specific questions.
Questions for Catherine, I know it was a lot in a very short amount of time, but.
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the ordinance? Or actually, with the amendment, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you all received a proposed amendment to make the changes that the IFA or Indiana Finance Authority was requesting to go with that. So can I have a motion to amend as presented? Yeah, amend ordinance 2025-11 as presented.
I make a motion, we approve the amendments on 2025.
Yep, motion from second, second from John, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, the ordinance has been now amended, so now, Rob, will you read it on second read, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2025-11 again is an ordinance authorizing taxable refunding of the City of Lebanon Sewer Works Revenue Bonds. Again, we went through this in more detail at the last meeting, I won't go through it, you know, every single paragraph in here, but I'd just like to hit the highlights. We get on page three, we get the issuance of the revenue refunding bonds. Their section two talks about the refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $10,630,000. $10,630,000, those again are defined as the refunding bonds. We get to page five, it talks about the book entry provisions, again, details about the bonds. That goes on for a number of pages. Section four talks about redemption of the refunding bonds, then execution, negotiability. The form of the refunding bonds is set forth in Exhibit A. And then we have the typical provisions that we see with the authorization for the preparation and the sale of the refunding bonds. The sale of the refunding bonds, as well as the financial records, how accrued interest is handled, the various pledges of net revenues, the funds and the accounts are all in these pages.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-11? Seeing none, any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Okay, would you have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-11.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John, I think I heard him slightly first. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved, thank you, council. And then on to 12, Catherine kind of gave the highlights, this one did not need to be amended, correct?
It does.
Or it does also need to be amended as well, sorry, okay. And these were the similar IFA rest of changes as well for this one? Okay. So is there a motion to amend ordinance 2025-12 as presented?
Ordinance 2025-12, we amend it as presented to us.
Second.
Motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, that is now amended. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2025-12 as amended? Seeing none, any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir. I make a motion, we approve ordinance 2025-12.
As amended. Motion as amended, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second from Rob, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that ordinance is approved, thank you, council. All right, that concludes what I have for old business, anything from council? Okay, new business then. First item up here is a resolution 2025-07. This is concerning additional appropriation concerning Stone Eater Bike Park. And this is an easy one, if I remember correctly, so Kevin?
I would hope so. 2025-07 is an additional appropriation for the Stone Eater Bike Park. Nope, we're not building anything more out there. This is a $25,000 donation from Discover Boone County, formerly the Convention of Visitors Bureau. This goes back to a commitment made about five years ago to provide us $100,000 in $25,000 installments. All this money will go to the Parks Department to fund ongoing maintenance projects at the park.
So essentially, because we've receded it in, I know it's called an additional appropriation, but we actually, it's really a negative additional appropriation, if that makes sense, because we're receiving additional money into the fund, if that makes sense to everybody.
We need an appropriation line to be able to spend it once we have it.
Yep. Ton, do you have that to read that one?
Yep.
Thank you.
Resolution of the common council for the city of Lebanon for an additional appropriation. Whereas it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, which the council has served proper notice. Resolution 2507 is to appropriate funds for Stone Eater Bike Park for Fund 2211 Non-Reverting Parks Department in the amount of $25,000.
Thank you, Tanya. There's a public hearing as well, too. So this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-07. If you have any public comment, please come forward and state your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-07. Further discussion from council, everybody happy with taking in the donation? You said no, sir? Yes, sir? No, we're good? Oh, no, sir on the comments, okay, gotcha, all right. All right, with that then, would you have a motion concerning Resolution 2025-07?
I make a motion, we pass Resolution 2025-07.
We have a motion to pass, and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, all right, that is approved, thank you, council. All right, next up, Resolution 2025-09. This is an appropriation from non-reverting road impact fees concerning the State Road 39 corridor study. Kevin?
Thank you very much. Somewhat similar, this does not have to do with donations, but we have a road impact fee plan, road impact fee ordinance, road impact study that basically says as a new project comes into town, a new development comes into town, that we have a master traffic model for the entire city and the surrounding areas, and we evaluate the impacts of each project based on a national standard for trip generation, which is the number of trips, the number of visits and exits from every business. And so those businesses have to pay, those developers have to pay a road impact fee whenever they're building anything new in town. And so we are accumulating those road impact fee funds, and we have a road impact fee fund that, I'm sorry, I should look this up, I think it's just over $2 million right now. And we can use that then to expand the capacity of our roads and intersections. So we save that up and we'll look for projects.
And Kevin, just to clarify, before we go on, this is an important point. We can't use that, those funds for maintenance. I know people complain about potholes, and they're like, you have $2 million sitting there.
Yeah, I was going to say that before anyone asked, why aren't we fixing more potholes? Well, I would argue that we're fixing all the potholes, but you're correct. Road impact fees statutorily can only be used for the expansion of road capacity. So resurfacing a road, not eligible. Widening a road from two lanes to four lanes, eligible. Replacing a four-way stop intersection with a stoplight or a roundabout, that is appropriate. So that's what, that's, I guess, a primer on road impact fees and what they can and can be used for. And one of the things they can also be used for is to study impacts to our roads, and that's what this is about. We have a proposal and a contract pending that was approved by the Board of Works as a contracting authority for the city, subject to funding approval. And that is for us to study impacts, existing and future impacts associated with the State Road 39 corridor through town in association with a potential relinquishment from the state of Indiana. Meaning at some point, the state of Indiana, well, the state of Indiana has approached us over the last couple of years and said, we want to reroute 39. We want to take it down 47 to the interstate and then back off of the interstate, going south out of town past the fieldhouse. And so what they want to do is give the remaining portion of 39 from 47 south to the interstate to the city and/or the county or both of us potentially. And in order to do that, we want to study what the impacts we're going to see on that corridor and how we make that corridor function. Anyone ever set at a stoplight for a couple of sessions going, you know, north to Walmart at the end of the day? We want to figure out how we can make that better. And we want to use this study in a negotiation with INDOT so that we can say, this is how much money we think you need to give us to take over this asset and look at the long-term impacts of growth and traffic so that we can properly address those going forward. So this is additional appropriation to spend money we already have on an eligible project to do a corridor study for State Road 39, looking at a potential relinquishment.
Kevin, we could get to some ridiculous number to do that, that it would not be worthwhile for us to take over.
It could, it could. They can't force a relinquishment on us, and this truly is a negotiation. When INDOT approaches these things, they just look at like a 10-year maintenance cycle and say, these are the projects we're supposed to do on that project, on that road segment for the next 10 years, we'll give you that much money. But they acknowledge that that's not all that's involved with taking over a road. Because, especially in this situation, we've had long conversations about this, that there's a lot of growth coming to this part of, part of the state, and we want to make sure we're being diligent with that. So if we're going to take it over, we want to know how we make it function properly long term. And they're willing to talk to us about that and look at long-term commitments. One, giving us more financial incentive to take it, but two, looking at long-term commitments to help us rebuild this into a way that works better for everyone. But we have to know what that looks like. So we're working with a consulting firm by the name of Avenue, and our subconsultant, A&amp;F Engineering, who does all of our traffic impact modeling. And we're working with them to develop this corridor study as a negotiation tool for what that settlement might be. And you're right, we don't have to say yes.
Yeah, and raise your hand if you think 39 works perfectly right now, right? Yeah, nobody. So this is, Kevin highlighted, essentially it's way for us to, you know, the INDOT came to us today, we want to give you 39, and they look at a 10-year cycle, and frankly, it's pittance for what it would cost to do anything significant with it, right? So we needed to have essentially data, and I'm not saying a designed plan, but certainly a high-level look at this of what would it actually cost to make it the work the way we all want it to work, right? And that's where I think, that's why we're doing this, to help us, just to go back to INDOT to say, hey, this is what it needs. Now, I know you guys aren't going to do that, because, you know, state funding and all that, right? But this is what we can justify with an engineering report, more or less. So that's kind of the local binding.
Fortunately, INDOT really doesn't look at impacts. They maintain roads until there's a problem, and then they work up a plan to fix them. But it's usually in arrears then, so there's already a significant problem. We can already see that coming, so we just want to be diligent and approach this with some foresight and try to make the best decision for everybody.
I have a question, too. If it comes to the fruition that we get to sit, we get 39 for whatever reason, we need to make sure that they cannot take I-65 on wrecks and run all that traffic down 39 on that, it's ours.
We can't stop them. When they need to divert traffic, they will divert traffic. And usually, that's not even an INDOT question, that's a state police question. If there is an incident on the interstate that they need to shut it down.
Or I'm concerned they can keep it. Or is unconcerned they can keep it.
Have we done a study like this before on, on that road?
Uh, no, we've not had a study like this.
I, I don't think NDOT's ever approached this, that I'm aware of. I don't think this has ever actually, NDOT's ever actually approached the city to say, "Hey, you want to relinquish it?" And so I think with the, frankly, with the new interchange being built near Eli Lilly, I think they kind of got some NDOT wheels turning of like, "Wait, why do we have this section?" We were upgrading 47 a lot for that project as well, too. So I think kind of got their wheels spinning to say, "Hey, maybe it is time to..." They did tell us it's at the top of their list of segments of road that they want to relinquish to localities, so.
They're planning a new roundabout at 47 and 39. Look for that, that could be under construction this summer. But yeah, there's, there's a lot of things that, that go into this. But we've never done this kind of a corridor study.
Yep.
We've done justification studies for an interchange, but never anything on this corridor.
Questions, concerns?
I'm not opposed to doing the survey.
I understand what you're saying, yeah.
But I'm just saying overall, I wouldn't want to get it if we had, they can come back and do it.
Ideally, right, there, as the, I mean, there's proposed western connection between 52 and 32, you know, through the LEAP district, that's been proposed, right? So some more avenues, right, than when those crashes or, you know, emergency situations occur on 65, having more arteries to help alleviate that. But you're, you're never gonna be able to build a road that can handle the traffic on I-65, right? So if there's an issue there, safety issues, it's, it's just gonna happen, right? And it's, it's unfortunate that we have to deal with that, but also because of I-65, we have the business park, too, that creates a lot of revenue for the city, too, right? So it's kind of gives and it takes, and that's kind of the burden we have, unfortunately, so.
And the study is not to figure out how we pass 65 traffic through town. That's just not even feasible. There's 78,000 cars a day that go through 65. We're, that is never going to work going through town. So, but we want to figure out how we make traffic on the daily situation and in our peak situations, travel and move as smoothly as possible.
Tanya, are we ready, please?
Resolution 2025-09, whereas it's been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which the council has served proper notice. This resolution will fund 4404, the non-reverting road impact fees, for $76,000.
Thank you, Tanya. Public hearing on this as well, too. So if there's, this time I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-09. If you need public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Haas, 105 North Meridian Street. As a surveyor and seeing what's coming growth-wise to our community, we need to look at this as a way to be able to control our growth a little bit better. We look at what Zionsville and Whistown did when they got 334 handed over to them by the state. It alleviates being able to, it's a lot of red tape to get a driveway permit. Heaven forbid you need to hang a traffic light if you have to go through stuff with NDOT. It streamlines the process immensely and helps with development, and it actually makes that corridor more, I guess, attractive to development than it does currently as a state road.
Well said, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, this time then, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-09. Any discussion, comments from council? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion when we pass Resolution 2025-09.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
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 Disposed. That is approved. Thank you, council. All right, next up here, do we need a recess? Everybody okay? Do you want to take a little break? We're okay, keep going. My mic's going. All right, let's keep going. All right. Normally I have them walk out of the meeting in the middle, but, all right. Next up is Resolution 2025-10. This is additional non-reverting for the Plane Department. Ben?
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize, council. This is actually a request that we made a couple of months ago, but I did it incorrectly, so we're doing it correctly this time. Since the non-reverting fund does have an appropriation in the budget, this is an additional expenditure out of that fund that hadn't been appropriated in that budget. So we should have come through with a formal appropriation request, which is on your agenda this evening. So this is the funding that was requested a couple of months ago to pay for scanning of all our historic documents and, and storing that data. And so again, this is a request that we already made a couple of months ago. We're just formalizing that request with an additional appropriation tonight. This is money that is already in that, the Planning Non-Reverting Fund. We're just doing a formal appropriation for this, so.
Thank you, Ben. Questions for Ben from the council? Tanya?
Resolution 2025-10, where it has been determined it's now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional appropriations require a public hearing, of which council has served proper notice. Now, now therefore be it resolved and adopted by the council that Resolution 2510 is to appropriate funds for document organization with Fund 2506, non-reverting Planning Department for $53,300, as was discussed a couple of weeks ago.
Thank you, Tanya. This time I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2025-10. If you need a public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record and address as well. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2025-10. Further discussion, comments from council? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 2025-10 for $53,300. Is that the amount you said, Tanya? I thought it was. I wrote it down. Pardon me? $53,300, is that the correct amount?
Yeah, we have motion.
Okay.
Our motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
I think Rob on that one, sorry. Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, that is approved. All right, next up, this is a, Ben again, council to consider a, consider the 2025 Conference of Plan update.
I apologize, I've got about 11 more items on the agenda that are gonna keep us here for a little while longer tonight, but thank you for some time this evening to present to you the results of a comprehensive plan update process we've been doing for, eh, probably about a year to the, up to this point. You might be thinking, "It seems like we just did this not that long ago." The irony is, is it was actually five years ago, the last time we updated the comprehensive plan, and there's a lot, as you all know, that has happened in the last five years. And I'll introduce Aaron here in a second with MKSK. They've been helping us do this update. But I did want to highlight a couple of things real quickly. A lot of you are familiar with the Boone County Housing Study that was done just about two years ago and presented last year. And one of the, one of the reasons we want to be very proactive about planning for the future of this community is, is this housing study is showing really what's coming our direction. And this is obviously Boone County, not specific to Lebanon, but a significant part of this growth is gonna come to this area. And what you see here is over a 25 to 30-year period, we're expecting over 60,000 residents to move to Boone County. And that's about 30,000 additional households that are gonna be looking for housing in this, in this community. And a, a portion of that, a percentage of that, is gonna be looking at Lebanon. So we want to be prepared for that. We want to have options for them that meet their needs where they're at. And so looking at the pace of new construction, what this housing study did is looked at a general, how, general growth that's expected, but then also looking at some of the impact or anticipated impact that LEAP might have. And that's both direct employment in LEAP, but also employment that's gonna meet, be needed in other industries to essentially serve the LEAP district businesses. So this gives you an idea, from 2025 to 2030, they're expecting about 5,000 total residential units need to be constructed in Boone County, so it's about 1,000 units per year. And of course, this says at LEAP, but I would say in Lebanon. So that's about 2,000 units we need to average over a five-year period. So you can kind of see between 2,000 and 3,000 units every five years need to be constructed in and around Lebanon, and probably about 5,000 total units, upwards of 6,000 total units in Boone County. So there's gonna be a significant amount of pent-up demand that not only, obviously, Lebanon, but all of Boone County is gonna need to be able to accommodate, but we want to be very proactive about that. So in addition to the comprehensive plan really incorporating things that have happened over the last five years, we're really looking at how do, how do we respond to some of these things that are being, coming our direction? How do we be proactive and make sure we get meaningful quality growth and development in our community? So with that then, we've spent about the last year evaluating the existing comprehensive plan, preparing a new comprehensive plan update for you here tonight. And I'll, Aaron with MKSK is gonna walk you through the process that we went through, and then I'm gonna cap it off by showing you the future land use map and kind of give you an idea of what we looked at as part of that process. Aaron?
Thanks, Ben. Good evening, all. Good to see you again. It's been a few years, so. Appreciate being here today, and thank you, Ben, for the introduction as well as the opportunity to collaborate with you all in this planning process. So again, my name's Aaron Kowalski. I'm an urban planner at MKSK out of our Indianapolis office. MKSK is a land planning, urban design, and landscape architecture firm. And we know that, you know, there's a lot that's changed in Lebanon over the last couple of years, and as Ben alluded to, you know, there's an opportunity to really be smart and proactive about the population growth that's coming to this region of central Indiana as well. So I'm gonna give you a high-level introduction to a comprehensive plan for the members of the audience here as well as the council. We'll also talk about, you know, how the state requires it, what's important, and then some of the major things we looked at during this update process. And then as we get to the end, we'll talk a little bit through the recommendations as well as, as some of the things that we're doing next, which include updating the website format. This comp plan is a little bit unique over your, your previous comp plan in that it'll have both a print and a web presence. So you'll be able to download that full report as well as access it as you can today on the city's website. So just to kind of level stuff for everyone, as part of the comprehensive plan, the first thing you do is, is you establish a boundary, a study area boundary, which in this case is the city proper as well as the surrounding township. So we've looked at areas in our annex today as well as areas where, you know, growth may continue in the future. And you can kind of see the map of the City of Lebanon as well as that surrounding area that we looked at. So comprehensive plans are required by the state of Indiana. They're a guidance document, but they are enshrined in state statute. The key content requirements have to do with objectives for future development that are set by a community, policies for land use and development, policy for development of public ways, places, lands, structures, and utilities. And then as, as part of a comprehensive plan, we also, you know, use this as an opportunity to work with the public, with stakeholders, with you all as elected officials to really set that long-term vision and planning for the community. This is a guide for decision and policymaking. I know a lot of you are involved with various boards and commissions as well as the council, and so obviously this is a guidance document for all those different bodies. This guides land use and zoning. So as you all know, anytime you want to do a rezoning, you reference back to your comprehensive plan to see if it's in alignment with that future land use or thoroughfare plan. A comprehensive plan is not a specific area plan, it's not a development plan, it's not a zoning ordinance, and it's meant to be a guidance document. It's meant to be flexible and to be updated every so often, and so hence why we're, we're here today. So why are we updating the current plan? I think Ben did a good job highlighting this, but we wanted to make sure that in addition to including information that was, you know, submitted to the city and approved as part of the LEAP district and the master planning and zoning that was done a couple of years ago for that area, we wanted to take a fresh look at the whole community. We wanted to do a fresh round of public input and really think about not only the LEAP area, but the community as a whole, how all these pieces and parts work together, and really be thinking about how we can, you know, really create something that's thoughtful for the community and helpful for you all, that's user-friendly and streamlined. So as Ben mentioned, we've been working on this for about a year. This is, you know, kind of the formal adoption that's required by statute. So we started out with an understanding. We spent some time with a kickoff meeting. We reviewed and audited your previous comp plan. We looked at things that made sense. We're still working things that weren't working. We met with a number of stakeholders as well as the steering committee, and we kind of updated some information from there. We did some public engagement. Some of you may have seen us at some of the events last year. Really gathered public input as well as continued stakeholder input, and we put all that into practice in our plan development phase, which if you think about this process, it was kind of like, it was a 12-month process split kind of into three parts. So we spent a little longer on the plan development than the understanding and the documentation, but we really got to a point where we felt, and kind of with input from all of you as well as, as our steering committee, we thought we got to a point where we captured that, that future path, that future vision that, that can be helpful in, in guiding the community. And then that plan documentation phase where we are today is we have an adoption draft here of the comprehensive plan that, of course, has been reviewed. We've concluded our meetings with the steering committee. And as I mentioned, you know, once this is formally adopted, then we'll be working with Ben and his team to kind of rebuild the website in a way that updates all the content. You'll also, on that website, get a link for a PDF of, of the physical comp plan as well. So that'll be a little different than what you have today. So what's in a comprehensive plan? We, we updated it, but we kept kind of the same branding, Lebanon redefined. You know, this is a plan that really is looking out the next 20 years. We engaged with a number of people. There's really three sections that make up this plan, and there were three phases as part of this, too. So we have introduction, we have our recommendations, and then we have an implementation section. The idea is upfront, we have a pretty succinct description of the process. We went through some of the input we gathered. We talk about the kind of, of process that we undertook here. From there, we document community and stakeholder engagement. We got good engagement during this process. Really thoughtful comments from the public as well as elected officials, appointed officials and staff. You'll see some images on the slides here. And when we update the website, we'll include a little bit more of this detail as well, but we went through a pretty robust engagement process. And that really helped us get to the six plan elements in our second section, which includes the recommendations. So housing in neighborhoods, land use and development character, transportation utilities, downtown, quality of life, and economic development. So we gave each of those sections equal weight, and we asked the community critical questions about these different topics. And then through that process, we not only updated the, the maps and the elements in the plan, but we used that to build out recommendations. And some of these recommendations focused on these kind of areas of focus, such as housing in neighborhoods. We documented neighborhoods that exist in, in the community now. We thought about the housing demand study that Ben referenced and how that might change neighborhoods or cause a need for other neighborhoods to be developed in the future. We thought about land use and character, how land use exists today, and of course, how land use might change in the future, and how we really embrace what the community has today. Invest in things like transportation and utilities is an integrated part of the land use process. We have a focus on downtown. We've promoted opportunities for continued investment, reinvestment in the downtown area. We know this community is really passionate about downtown. I love your downtown, it's wonderful. Quality of life, thinking through parks, connections to trails, development that promotes that quality of life, quality of place, and then having those, those right places for those amenities in the communities that are, that are supportive of families and the people that live here. And then, of course, economic development. You all know better than me the opportunities that are before you. We did integrate a lot of the thoughts regarding the LEAP district and the economic development plans in that area, which of course were, were prior adopted by the council as part of the zoning update. But then we thought holistically about the community, and we, we thought critically about, again, that housing study where we could see other economic development opportunities come into fruition. So we feel that this is a pretty comprehensive guide for the community to use as it, as it moves forward in a positive way. You'll see key initiatives throughout each of these sections. Those are also documented a little later within the implementation plan. And at the end of the document, the implementation plan is really a succinct set of recommendations that can be used by elected officials, appointed officials, by staff, and then also pointed to by the public as conversations occur in the community. And this was something that was really important to Ben and his team. They, they really wanted to make sure that we documented these initiatives in a thoughtful way and really laid them out so that as you all are thinking about the future, you can have those steps in place. So, and you can kind of see how this is formatted. So with that, I might turn it back over to Ben, and I hope that was a good update for you all. Thank you for your time.
So obviously, there's a whole bunch of information in the plan, and Aaron went through it at a high level, but I did want to spend just a few minutes looking at the future land use map. This is probably one of the things we look at most in that document, and just talk a little bit about what the strategy was as we looked at this with the steering committee internally with staff and then also with our stakeholders. So a, a lot of this is gonna look relatively familiar. You can see in this kind of bluish, grayish color, this is the LEAP district. And then the one that's a little bit more blue here to the south is, is the existing business park, which we show expanding just a little bit to the south to incorporate New Cold Site, which is down here. site, which is down here. But a big part of what we did is kind of look at the 12 o'clock to 6 o'clock part of the clock here and look at northeast and then southeast and looking at areas of where we expect there might be interest in further development in and around Lebanon. And so you see the north here, the comprehensive plan does extend further north, the future land use map than it does now. We actually go up to State Road 47. Much of this is in this kind of a tan color, which is agricultural, but you will see that we have added some areas for residential development as you go north of 300 in this area. And similarly around to the northeast and east side, we're kind of extending out to that next halo, if you will, outside of the existing city limits of the city in anticipating that there might be some residential opportunities in that area. And the other, I would say, significant changes really to be reflective of what the water for development was, it's been approved to the southeast here and the mixed density residential and commercial uses they proposed down there. So that was really the big thing. And it did, I mean, obviously there's significant initiatives to continue to reinvest in downtown, but really looking at what those residential development pressures might do here in Boone County and where we can see that there would be potentially some residential development opportunities. These are all contingent on somebody acquiring property, coming to us for annexation. We have no jurisdiction out in these areas right now. This is really if somebody were to come to us and say, hey, I'd like to annex this property, and here's what I'm considering for the site, we can say, okay, our future land use map and our comprehensive plan suggests these types of land uses in the area. If you were comfortable with that, if you're comfortable with that, let's talk about an option. This is not the city going out to annex property and creating development opportunities. This is really just our response when somebody comes to us and said, hey, we're looking in this area, what does the city think? And this is the document we use to kind of guide that discussion with those and get meaningful development discussions and opportunities coming our way. So with that, I'll kind of stop there, see if there's any questions. The comprehensive plan is adopted via resolution, so it's something that would just take one reading tonight. I know we've put a lot of information in front of you. I'm not necessarily asking you to adopt it tonight unless you're ready to. If you'd like more time to dig into the document and ask me questions, I'd be happy to do that and then come back here in a couple of weeks at your first meeting in May and seek an adoption then. But just happy to open it up for discussion now and can answer any questions you have now, and then we can decide how we want to move forward.
Definitely think I'd like a little bit more time personally to be able to review it a little bit more thoroughly because it was very comprehensive.
As should be. Aptly named.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody else feels.
Yeah, and that's totally fine. Like, I didn't expect us to vote on tonight. I just wanted to give you the, they've got to a point, right? It was ready, so I wanted to kind of share with you guys all the information and.
Once we approve this, this is what we're rolling forward with, right?
Well, yeah, so like, I just want to reemphasize, like Aaron said, this is a document that's meant to be flexible. This is part of the decision-making process, but this is not an ordinance, this is not law. This is something that helps guide our decision-making. So ultimately, the council decides what is going to be law. So if somebody came in and there's a piece of property that said it's supposed to be residential, but five years from now it made more sense to further to be a commercial develop in a major intersection, that's something that the council can still consider. So this is part of the decision-making process, but this is not law. So it is meant to be flexible and to be changed over time, and certainly that's why we want to be able to revisit it every so often and say, hey, okay, some other things have changed, let's make adjustments to this. But it is definitely part of the process.
But not binding.
I'm sorry?
But not binding.
But not binding, yes. This is not a legal document necessarily. It's just meant to help us shape policy and make decisions.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, I get it. We're going to move on. If one of you guys requested to just like have it, we'll address the next meeting.
So we definitely aren't pushing for an adoption tonight. We wanted to get the information in front of you, do this presentation. If you had any questions now, we'd be happy to answer them. But over the next couple of weeks before your next meeting, if you have specific question comes up, just reach out to me. I'll be happy to answer them, and we can address those at the next meeting too.
All right. Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Aaron, as well. All right, next item up, this is ordinance 2025-13. This is council to consider rezone for 1400 West State Road 32.
All right, since we just mentioned how we use the comprehensive plan to guide our decision-making process on rezones and the like, we have a rezoning next on the agenda. This is a little bit of history on this site and actually the next one on the agenda. These properties are actually the outlots that are out in front of the city's shell building project on State Road 32. When we updated the ordinance and zoning map last year, we were actually in the middle of negotiations for a company to purchase the shell building, and they were interested in also purchasing these two outlots. So just so happened, we were at a time when we were amending the zoning map, so we decided just to streamline the process for them, we would go ahead as part of that updated zoning map, just change the zoning of these outlots from a commercial to an industrial zoning classification to facilitate their purchase and development of that as an industrial use. Well, then that project went away and they did not close on those properties, and now we've got two commercial outlots that are zoned for industrial use, so they're really dissimilar to what we really want on that property if it's not going to be part of an industrial development behind it. So now, both of these outlets have commercial developers interested in developing them, and they require commercial zoning classification for these sites. So this is the first one here. This is the southeast, or I guess the north side of State Road 32, just southeast of our shell building. There is an investor looking to develop this as a hotel, and that would require a commercial zoning classification or to accommodate that development. And we've looked at it with them, and that's what is before you tonight is an ordinance to rezone this property from the LI, light industrial zoning classification, to the GB, general business zoning classification to accommodate that commercial development of this site. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What did you say again that was looking to purchase that?
They've actually already purchased the site, and they're looking to develop it as a hotel.
What kind of hotel?
I believe it's a La Quinta that, while it's not officially determined, I believe it's a La Quinta that they're looking to develop here. I think it's a four-story, yeah.
Any questions on Ben for that? Okay, Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-13, again, is an ordinance rezoning property and amending the zoning map of the city. As Ben indicated, this petitioner, Kusiyashi Hospitality LLC filed for an application to rezone approximately 1.6 acres that is described in Exhibits A and B from light industrial to general business. The Lebanon Plan Commission sent a favorable recommendation in this council, seven to zero for the rezone. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the petitioner is the owner of the property. It seeks to have the property that comprises approximately 1.6 acres to be rezoned from light industrial to general business, as set forth in Exhibits A and B. This council has paid reasonable regard to the comprehensive plans, current conditions, character of current structures and uses in each district. From and after this date, the official zoning map of the city shall be changed from light industrial to general business, and the director of the planning of the city of Lebanon Plan Commission is authorized to change official zoning map consistent with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Ordinance round of first reading. Let's just further comments. We'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be May 12 at 7:15 PM. All right, similarly, Ben talked about the other parcel now?
Yes, I would say ditto, except for a different address. So again, very similar situation. The ironic timing is they both came in and applied for this at the same plan commission meeting. So this is a very similar request. It's just the property just to the west of the one we just introduced. It seems a similar situation is currently zoned industrial. There is an investor that has an option or has it under contract that like to develop it as a commercial use. There are a variety of options he's considering. It likely would be anchored by a fueling station, which is a permitted use in the commercial zoning districts. And then he's looking at some variation of convenience retail and/or fast casual restaurant that might go in there as well as he looks at what might work on this site. But again, this is again, very similar situation to the last one. This is a commercial outlot that's right now zoned industrial, so we're looking to get it back to that commercial zoning classification for allow for those commercial development.
They'll be back to the Plan Commission for approval and so forth for what type of business it is and that sort of thing.
Yes, exactly right. Yeah, this is just setting up that the use and then the specific development standards will all still be reviewed at a later date to make sure it complies with that zoning district.
It's a restaurant. Do we get a choice? What kind?
What kind of restaurant? Unfortunately, our zoning ordinance isn't quite that specific.
I think we've got enough of one kind.
If I could pick what type of restaurants we had in town as mayor, trust me, we would have.
We've done that already.
We'd have a Skyline Chili from Cincinnati, fruits, all that. Yeah, no. Well, Skyline Chili, it's a little different. No, we don't get to pick, we don't get to pick the restaurants, unfortunately, despite the common.
I think we got plenty of.
Thoughts, we do.
I think we got plenty of one.
Well, you know, it's the market depicts it, right?
We can certainly work with the investors and try to guide their decision-making, but.
Don't have a chicken joint. It'd be nice to have.
You're absolutely right about that.
Roasted.
We do our best. They don't always listen, though, so. All right, Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-14 again concerns the rezoning of certain property and amending the zoning map of the city of Lebanon. This petitioner, Sunrise Seven Real Estate LLC filed its application for rezone of approximately 1.7 acres described in Exhibits A and B from light industrial to general business. The Lebanon Plan Commission sent a favorable recommendation for the rezone, seven to zero, to this council. Therefore, this council finds that the petitioner has consent from the property owner to request a rezone of the property. Again, this request is for approximately 1.7 acres, set forth in Exhibits A and B to rezone light industrial to general business. This council has paid reasonable regard to the comprehensive plans, current conditions, character of the current structures and uses in each district. From and after this date, the official zoning map of the city shall be changed from light industrial to general business.
Thank you, Rob. Then we're starting round our first reading, and we'll take that up at our next meeting on May 12 at 7:15 PM. Let's just, any final comments from council? We're almost about two hours, so if the council's mind will take a little quick recess for five minutes, I know you guys have already been waiting this long, but five minutes for everybody. We'll stay in the fall of gavel. I know you guys have already been waiting this long, but five minutes for everybody. We'll stand to follow the gavel. All right, we're going to read adjourn now. First or next item up, item F, excuse me, I was already, item G, excuse me. This will be ordinance 2025-15. This is council to consider the LEAP Phase 36 annexation. And really, items G through N are all that can be the similar ordinances. So let's kind of Ben kind of present the high level view for all of them.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think what I'll do is I'll give a quick overview of all of these. And then we do have to go through each one individually, read the ordinances, hold a public hearing for each one. And as we do that, I'll just quickly introduce where the, where that lot, that parcel, excuse me, is located. And then we can read the ordinance and hold a public hearing. So just in general, this is very similar to the last round of annexations we did right towards the end of last year. As you can see, these are single, primarily single parcel sites that are filling in holes around the LEAP District area. So we've got eight different ones. Every single one of them is a single parcel, except for this one down here, the very south. You can see that there's two parcels, D and E. So these again are all 100% voluntary annexations. The property owner has requested annexation to the city of Lebanon. And so that's what these will, that's what we have these, each one an individual annexation ordinance ordinances. This is a multi-step process. The Plan Commission holds the first public hearing, and they evaluate the potential zoning districts to assign to the parcels as part of the annexation. And so we did that last Monday evening, held a public hearing. And in each case, these all fall in the, on the comprehensive plan within the LEAP District area. So these each come to you with a unanimous recommendation from Plan Commission to assign the LEAP zoning district to the parcels. And so that is part of each one of these annexations ordinances. We've also made sure to add language in there. There was language added to last round that assigns these to the LEAP rate districts for water and sanitary sewer. And in fact, we added the ordinance for the sanitary sewer rate district to the, to it as well, to make sure we got everything accurate and up to date on those. So that's a quick overview. We do have Phase 36 through 43. I'll do each one of them individually after the ordinance is introduced by Rob, or we'll go through those and let Rob read the ordinance and hold the public hearing. But I will turn it over. I don't know, Ken, if your team wanted to do a brief introduction, if you'd just like to get these, get these kicked off.
Yeah, I say just go ahead real quick right now.
Good evening. I'm Chris Engel, partner at TAFs, Lieutenant and Hollister, outside counsel for IEDC. Before you tonight, there are eight separate petitions comprising approximately 58 acres that, as Ben mentioned, will all be slated for the plan unit development portion of the zoning code. Let Ben go on details, but just wanted to open it up if the council had any questions.
Any questions from council? As you can tell, we've been through 35 of these, so we've usually had our answer.
Get your old prose out by now. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the long meeting.
So, real quickly then, specifically to ordinance number 2025-15, which is the Phase 36 LEAP annexation. If they want to pull that map back up, you'll see this is a narrow little sliver of a parcel up here that was identified that hadn't been annexed in one of the last rounds. And it is a 0.24 acre parcel. Quick zoom in here, you can get an idea. Approximate address of 1865 West 300 North. And you see, we annexed everything around it, and this one little sliver got left out. So that is the parcel that is part of ordinance 2025-15.
We eventually can replat this all, correct, I assume, Ben? This seems like a very unique parcel.
What district is that going to be in?
Council districts in, it'll be written in the ordinance when we do it.
Oh, okay, never mind. We'll get it next time.
I think it is, I think it is council district three, yeah.
District three. So you're Sandra.
Sure, Sandra.
Rob, I'll have you read the ordinance, please.
Council Mayor, for all of these, they're substantially similar. And as Ben indicated, I'll hit the highlights, but they're all 100% voluntary. And the Plan Commission has provided a favorable recommendation to this council. So ordinance 2025-15 is the LEAP Phase 36 annexation that concerns a property located in Exhibits A and B. And this council finds that the recitals are found to be accurate and incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 36 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is eligible for annexation and is declared annexed in a part of the city of Lebanon. It satisfies the contiguity requirements required by Indiana law and is assigned council district three. And upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP District zoning classification is assigned to this LEAP Phase 36 annexation area. Again, as Ben indicated, this annexation area has the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted by ordinances 2024-32 and 2025-08. And it shall be in full force and effect as required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. This time I open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-15. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing no sudden movement, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-15. We will take that up for our second reading at our next meeting, which will be May 12th at 7:15 PM. All right, next up, 2026-16. This is Phase 37.
All right, ordinance 2025-16, LEAP Phase 37. This is actually a piece of State Road 32 right of way that's owned by the IEDC that hadn't been annexed yet. Identified here, parcel B out to the west. It's approximately 0.34 acres that you see highlighted here and is part of this LEAP Phase 37 annexation. And I think this one is now council district two.
Two, two, yep. Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
Council ordinance 2025-16 again concerns LEAP Phase 37 annexation for the properties set forth in Exhibits A and B. This council finds the recitals are incorporated by reference. And this LEAP Phase 37 annexation area depicted in Exhibits A and B is hereby declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. It satisfies the contiguity requirements set forth in Indiana law. It is assigned council district two. And upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP zoning district classification is assigned for this area. And it will also have the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted by prior ordinances as we discussed before, and shall be in full force and effect as required by Indiana law.
Rob, any comments from council?
Yeah, in our, in our agenda here, it shows 2026-16, 2026-17-18, and then it goes to 27. And you guys are saying 2025, but our agenda shows 26.
Oh, that's, those are typos. I'm sorry.
They should all be 2025.
They're all 2025s on the, on the ordinance names. I apologize. Yeah, that's a, I think Kelly probably pulled it down on, or Excel and created a bad pattern on that. So yeah, they're all 2025 is the correct name for the ordinance.
Okay, yes.
They're all 2025 on that.
Every one of.
On the ordinance. Yeah, it's incorrect on the agenda, but it's correct on the actual ordinance itself. Yeah, that's just the year, right? We're not time traveling yet, so. Okay. This, yeah, this time I'll open the public hearing then on ordinance 2025-16. If you have a comment, please come forward, station your name for the record and address as well. Oh, Matt move, I thought, okay, no. There was some sudden movement, but no. With that, we'll close the public hearing then on ordinance 2026, 2025-16. Got me twisted now. And we'll take that up at our next meeting, May 12th at 7:15 PM. All right, next, it will be ordinance 2025-17, Phase 38.
2025-17 is LEAP Phase 38. It's just to the east of the last parcel. Again, it's a piece of right of way that it's actually, it has a parcel number and is owned by the IEDC and hadn't been annexed in previous phases. So here's just a little zoomed in version of that. It is a 0.86 acre parcel, is identified here on the map. And it is area to council district two, and it is part of this annexation.
Thank you, Ben. Questions from council? So just generally speaking too, so 32 is kind of the dividing line between council district three and council district two. So that's kind of their, the splits there. Yep, there you go. All right, with that, Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-17 is the LEAP Phase 38 annexation and the properties described and depicted in Exhibits A and B. This council finds the recitals are incorporated by reference in the LEAP Phase 38 annexation area again described in Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and it is assigned council district two. It will be upon the recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP District zoning classification is assigned to this area. It will also have the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts as enacted in prior ordinances. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Council discussion? Okay, this time then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-17. If you need a public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, as well as your address. Keep comments, three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-17. Take that up at our next meeting, May 12th, 7:15 PM. All right, next item here, ordinance 2025-18. This is Phase 39.
All right, Phase 39. Now we're going to the south end of the LEAP District. There is two parcels that are part of Phase 39 that you see here identified as parcel D and E. And here is a close-up of those two parcels. Addresses are 403 South 400 West and 3980 West 50 South. It's a total of about 5.78 acres.
Questions, comments from council? Sorry, technical glitch. All right, this time then we'll open the public hearing then. Oh, yeah, Rob, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-18 again is the LEAP Phase 39 annexation. The properties described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that the recitals are incorporated by reference. The annex area of LEAP Phase 39 annexation area of Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and it is assigned council district two. Upon recommendation of the Plan Commission, the LEAP District zoning classification is assigned to this area. And as the others, the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts enacted in prior ordinances will be a part of this. And it shall be in full force and effect upon passage by this council and required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. This time then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-18. If you have a comment, please come forward, state your name for the record, as well as your address. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-18. Take that up at our next meeting, which will be May 12th at 7:15 PM. All right, next item here, ordinance 2025-19. This is Phase 40.
All right, LEAP Phase 40, ordinance 2025-19 is a single parcel you see here down at the south end of the LEAP District. Highlighted here, it is about 3.85 acres with an address of 445 South 300 West.
Questions, comments from council? Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-19 is the LEAP Phase 40 annexation for the properties described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 40 annexation area again depicted in Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. This area satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. It's assigned council district two. And the LEAP District zoning classification is assigned to it as well as the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts. And it shall be in full force and effect by passage of this council in accordance with Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. This time then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-19. If you need a public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-19. We'll take that up at our next reading at, you guessed it, May 12th, 7:15 PM. All right, next up will be ordinance 2025-20. This is Phase 41.
All right, LEAP Phase 41 is a small little one acre parcel that you see here on, right on State Road 32. We'll zoom in here. You can see right here, Phase 41. The address is 2250 West State Road 32.
Ben, council questions? Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-20 is the LEAP Phase 41 annexation for the properties described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 41 annexation area depicted in Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. It satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law and it is assigned council district three as well as the LEAP District zoning classification and the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts. And it shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and as required under Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. This time then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-20. If you need a public comment, please come forward, state your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-20. We'll take that up at our next meeting, May 12th at 7:15 PM. All right, next one, ordinance 2025-21. This is Phase 42.
All right, LEAP Phase 42, you see highlighted, it's kind of in the center of the screen here, parcel H. It is a 40 acre parcel that you see highlighted here. We'll zoom in a little bit to see the location of that parcel. The address is 3755 West 25 North.
Thank you, Ben. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-21 is LEAP Phase 42 annexation for the properties described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference in the LEAP Phase 42 annexation area described in Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. This area satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law. It is assigned council district two and shall be assigned the LEAP District zoning classification as well as the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts and shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and as required under Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Any council discussion on this ordinance? Okay, this time then I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-21. If you have a public comment, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-21. We'll take that up our next reading on May 12th at 7:15 PM. All right, and finally here, ordinance 2025-22. This is Phase 43.
All right, LEAP Phase 43 is in the north, north area here of the LEAP District. It is a 6.59 acre parcel. This actually does not have an address, at least not in the GIS, but it's located at the intersection of 200 North and 400 West, the southwest corner there.
Ben? Council questions, concerns? Rob?
Thank you, Mayor. Council ordinance 2025-22 is the LEAP Phase 43 annexation for the property described in Exhibits A and B. This council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated by reference. The LEAP Phase 43 annexation area again described in Exhibits A and B is declared annexed into and a part of the city of Lebanon. Satisfies the contiguity requirements under Indiana law, shall be assigned council district three as well as the LEAP District zoning classification and the water and wastewater LEAP rate districts. And shall be in full force and effect upon adoption by this council and as required by Indiana law.
Thank you, Rob. Questions, concerns, council? Okay, this time then we'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2025-22. If you have a public comment, please come forward and state your name, for the record, address, and favorite food. No? Okay. Seeing no sudden movements, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2025-22. We'll take that up at our next meeting on May 12th at 7:15 PM. Apologize, council, I do know that was tedious, but we did ask our attorney if we could do that all as like one lump thing. And they're like, no, you can't. They have to be individual. So I know that's tedious, but we got through it now. That concludes what I have for new business. Anything from the council? Okay?
I'll make one comment for council members.
Talk to the microphone, Dick, please. Hey, Dick.
I'll make one comment for council members just as soon as I've checked the date here. I don't know if everybody gets any information from AIM, but there is a budget workshop for council members coming up on May 16th. It's a virtual meeting in the morning, I think it's nine to 12, something like that. So if you're interested, you need to go to AIM and register for that webinar.
Or you could email Kelly, and she can register you as well. I will say with the changes that the legislature made this year, probably something that would be worth your time if you're available to tune into that. So, and obviously you guys have funding in your budget for trainings, all that stuff. So we'll, obviously, if there's any costs associated with that, we can cover that with the budget. So certainly, if you hadn't done that before, probably a worthwhile exercise this year, so. Okay, any other announcements or discussion?
Yes, and I know it's late, so we won't talk about it too long. But I just wanted to open up the, open it up for everybody to consider changing the no golf cart rule on Lafayette Avenue. Since 65 is closed off and it's not really, there's no traffic coming through there. And it's not a major road like 32, 39, if we could consider changing that and, or amending it or what have you to have, to where golf carts can go up and down on Lafayette Avenue. Now, the other thing is that we're looking at that park over there. And I know there's going to be families wanting to go there, and that'd be good, you know. But I don't want to wait that long for it. I'd rather have it now.
It's spoken like a councilwoman that hasn't been through a golf cart council meeting before, but sure, that's absolutely something we can address and we can.
I would like to address it whenever we can or however.
Fair enough. To your point, though, that is a fair comment. You know, obviously, that's not how 65 operates anymore. People aren't coming off, you know, I think it's a fair, fair point.
Five people on my street that have golf carts that would love to go up and down, you know, instead of trying to go through the neighborhoods and stuff. But, plus, I just bought one, so.
All right.
But I've got to be legal with it, you know?
Fair enough. We can, we can look at that, pull that up. I know we've done that few, it's been a few years we've tweaked that, but we can, but we can, we can pull that up, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other announcements or discussion? Okay. We have motion to pay the claims. There are a second?
Second.
Second from Rob. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? All right, that, with that, that concludes our agenda, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned. Is there a second? Second from Sierra. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed? If I didn't say it enough earlier, our next city council meeting will be May 12th at 7:15 PM. We are adjourned.